Mr. Martinez, is it 4:30 right now?
My phone has 4:30 and the wall says 4:30 as well.
Are we on? Are we on?
We have form now.
For the record, I'm gonna ask Ms. Carrillo to call form before I call the meeting to order.
Mayor Armando O'Caña.
Present ma'am.
Mayor Prochem Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Councilman Ruben Plata is still not here. Councilwoman Nori Garza is still not here. But mayor, we do have three out of the five, so we have form.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. We call officially the Monday, April 26, 2021, meeting to order at 4:30. And with that, I will ask for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can everyone please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Heavenly Father, as we celebrate Police Memorial Week, we pray that you watch over our first responders. Please guide them as they keep us safe and give them strength and courage as they serve our great city. We ask that you bless the families of our first responders that have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving the City of Mission. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation, united by individuals who are committed to justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I will call for presentations and I'm gonna ask Chief Dominguez, Chief Dominguez, you have the floor, sir. For the record, Ms. Garza has arrived.
Sorry, I missed you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Today is a special day for us here in the Mission Police Department as we honor Officer Jorge Cabrera. With us today is his wife Amy, his kids Amber, Madeline, and Elijah. You know, it's been a number of months, but it seems like it was just yesterday. And obviously, in remembrance of the special man in our lives for this beautiful family and our family here at the Mission Police Department, we would like to honor him with this proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the City of Mission honors and commemorates the life of Jorge Cabrera, who lost his life in the line of duty on August 24, 2020, at the age of 42. And whereas Jorge Cabrera was born on May 6, 1978, son of Roberto Cabrera Sr. and Thelma Cabrera. He grew up in Mission, Texas, and attended Mission Independent School District and was a graduate from Mission High School, class of 1997. And whereas Jorge Cabrera was a beloved husband, father, and public servant for 12 years and one month before his ultimate sacrifice. And whereas Jorge Cabrera leaves behind his wife of 20 years, Amy Cabrera, three children, Amber, Elijah, and Madeline Cabrera. And whereas after graduating from the Lower Grue Grandy Valley Regional Police Academy in 2008, he began his law enforcement career with the Mission Police Department in July of 2008 and served the citizens of Mission for a period of 12 years and one month. Whereas during his tenure with the Mission Police Department, he developed a passion for traffic enforcement. He was able to earn 593 hours of training related to motor vehicle collision investigation, alcohol and drug abuse, DWI enforcement, and accident reconstruction. He also became a certified drug recognition expert. And whereas a man of God and faith, Jorge Cabrera gave unselfishly to others and was a very active member of the First Baptist Church of McAllen. And whereas Jorge Cabrera was beloved by all over privilege to share in his life and leaves behind memories that will be treasured forever by his family and countless friends. And whereas the City of Mission hereby extends its sincere condolences to the brief family of Jorge Cabrera. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2021, as Jorge Cabrera Day in Mission, Texas. Proclaim on this the 26th of April, 2021.
Thank you, Chief. I will entertain a motion to accept the proclamation as read by the chief.
I move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o, chief, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Now at this time, as discretionary for the chair, Mr. Martinez, I'm calling item number 31 of the agenda. Please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 31 is approval of resolution number?
It'd be 1727, sir.
1727, authorizing the dedication of the 3,800 to the 4,500 block of South Glasgow Road as Officer Jorge Cabrera wrote in remembrance of Mission Police Officer Jorge Cabrera. The Mission Police Traffic Safety Committee met on Tuesday, April 20, 2021, and approved the dedication of the 3,800 block to the 4,500 block of South Glasgow Road as Jorge Cabrera wrote. Officer Jorge Cabrera died in the line of duty on August 24, 2020. Staff and city manager recommend approval for the dedication of this roadway.
I shall move.
We have a motion on the floor to approve resolution 1727. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for any discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries, and the resolution 1727 is approved, chief, with a five-o vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. On behalf of the family and the Mission Police Department, very honored to have that roadway named after him. And obviously, May 6 is his birthday. We do plan a celebration that day there. We're gonna have it at the South Police Station on Glasgow and Military Highway at 9 o'clock in the morning on the day of his birthday to celebrate his birthday and obviously unveiling the street signs of that new name roadway on his name. So I really appreciate, obviously, that dedication and you honoring him in this very important day for us and for the family as well.
How do you want to handle the official delivery of the proclamation, chief?
Sir, if you don't mind, I would like the family to step up and if you would honor us with a photograph in presenting the proclamation.
Forward.
Guys, if you can.
Mr. Perez, thank you. Over. You're sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Chief, I would like to call item number two of the presentation. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Next proclamation, sir, is National Police Week. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Mission Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Mission, Texas. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against suppression or intimidation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9 through the 15, 2021, as National Police Week. And call upon all citizens of Mission and upon all patriotic civic and education organizations to observe the week of May 9 through 15, 2021, as Police Week with the appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to the responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation of preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, call upon all citizens of Mission to observe Monday, May 10, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Mission, Texas, to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duties. Proclaim on this the 26th day of April, 2021.
Thank you, chief. I will entertain my motion at this time. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The proclamation is approved, five o, chief. And then you want to step forward so you can receive the official one?
Sir, do you mind if I ask something of mine?
You have the floor, sir. Thank you, chief. I will call item number three. Ms. Mungia, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today we'd like to present to you our employee of the month for March, Mr. Marco A. Ramirez, evidence custodian for our police department. If I can ask him to please come to the front? Mr. Ramirez was nominated by Corporal Marco Basaldua, who writes the following. "I can describe more than one occasion where Mr. Ramirez went above and beyond on his work. The first thing I would like to mention is something he has done and continues to do, which is the upkeep of the evidence room as we are currently completing inventory. Mr. Ramirez has cleaned in detail, organized, and labeled every location accordingly. I would like to recognize his effort as this is not an easy task and he continues to upkeep the evidence room daily. I also want to commend Mr. Ramirez in the way he motivates his coworkers and helps everyone in the Bureau. Mr. Ramirez double checks everyone's work to make sure it is processed correctly and assigned to the correct location. When something is completed timely and correctly, Mr. Ramirez takes the time to recognize the employee on his work. In addition to this, when Mr. Ramirez sees someone needing help with the task, he does not hesitate to help in completing the task. He is a true team player. Mr. Ramirez, thank you for the time, effort, and detail you provide to your position as evidence custodian. Congratulations." This is for you? I think this is for you. If you can step this way to the picture of the council.
Congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations. Do you want us to go a little bit more?
Is there anybody else in the department you want?
Randy, if you'd like to go out there. You're good, right?
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Martinez. I mean, correct or incorrect, Mr. Ramirez? Chief, any last words or anything?
Well, I love this man. You know, I pride myself in being organized. This man takes me by leapt and bounds. That evidence room, he's just done miracles with it. One of the things right now, we're trying to prepare for accreditation. We have a visit soon to be able to see if we're gonna meet the standards. And one of the areas that I was always concerned about is that evidence room. But with him back there and taking care of business and making sure that everything's in line, he just does a great job for us, very organizing what he does. Obviously, he's a mover and shaker, and like that inspires the rest of them to also help in the process. Very dedicated to what he does, and I really appreciate him and the work he does for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Call for item number four. Ms. Enriquez, are you on, Ms. Enriquez?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you, thank you. So wonderful things happening here at the Mission Chamber of Commerce. Next Friday, we will be having our golf tournament, our golf tournament to benefit Mission C A S D students. So if you're out there and you haven't gone or secured your team, please make sure you do so this week or next week. And we're excited to host the golf tournament 2021 for next Friday. Second, we, last week, we featured Bilad with Divit on Mastermind Series. We're excited about, you know, having her as an asset here in the City of Mission. And so we will be resuming Masterminds, not this week, but next week. We have six more special guests lined up. And the Business Development Avenue, this Thursday, we are hosting a leadership from the Competencies Approach Workshop, and that is hosted by Dr. Brown. So join us next Thursday, this Thursday at 3:00 p.m. if you'd like to learn more about the workshop and regarding to leadership from a different approach. On Wednesday, our chamber team will be participating in a briefing that is hosted by the U.S. Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And this briefing will be in regard to the U.S. SBA $28.6 billion Restaurant Revitalization Fund. So be on the lookout. We're gonna participate to be briefed on it, and then we can share with our members. So be on the lookout for that fund. The acronym is RRF. And lastly, in the tourism world, we've got great news. Our hotel occupancy tax numbers are in for the first quarter of 2021, and we are at 71% out of 100, which is amazing, and it's actually record-breaking. If you compare that first quarter to last year, the 2020 first quarter, we were at 56.6 out of 100. So we're doing really good so far, and we just gotta keep going in the tourism world. And that is all I have this evening for you, Mayor and City Council.
Yeah, congratulations, ma'am. You know, any questions by any of the council members? No questions? I will call for a presentation. I will call for a presentation, item number five, and I'm going to ask Mr. Perez and the council, since you have the departmental reports on your packet. Is there any questions? Mr. Perez is ready to answer them, or call for a director.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the departmental report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, citizen participation. Ms. Carrillo, do we have anybody that has signed up in writing or electronic?
Mayor, I had Gladys Cardenas. I don't know if she's on. She wished, she wanted to speak in citizen's participation.
Ms. Cardenas, if you're on, you have the floor, ma'am, and you have, please state your name and your address for the record, and you have approximately three minutes, ma'am.
Gladys Cardenas? No, Mayor, we don't see her on.
Okay. Do we have anybody else?
We do have some other members that have called, but I believe it's on public hearing items. So I told them that when we get to their item, they'd be able to speak.
As long as they register themselves.
Yes, sir.
So we'll be able to call them. Any other citizen's participation? If not, we'll go to electronics. Do we have anybody from that indicates that Charlie or... There's nobody. Therefore, I'm going to close the citizen's participation, item number six, on the presentation. Then I'm going to go to the planning and zoning recommendations, and I'm going to call for the public hearing, and then calling for item number seven. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number seven is a rezoning of a 26.59 acres auto lot 14-1, 15-1, and 16-1, west addition to Shenan. This is from PUD, AOP, and R1T to PUD R1. The developer is Redline Development LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located along the southwest corner of Mile 1 South and Scenic Way. Surrounding zones include multifamily and agricultural interim to the north, townhouse residential, single-family residential and agricultural to the east, high-density residential district, and single-family to the west, townhouse residential, single-family residential, multifamily residential, and agricultural to the south. Existing land uses include, to the north, there is an apartments and single-family residential; to the east is vacant; to the west and south is single-family residential and apartments. The site is currently an abandoned golf course. The future land use map for this area shows it as plan unit development, open space. Staff notes that although this area is a plan unit development, there is no active homeowners association. These properties were used as a golf course, but for the past two years, there have been no activities. Notices were sent out to property owners within 200-foot radius. Staff did receive a petition. After verifying the petition, there is a 25% that are within the 200-foot radius. Their concerns are in regards to drainage, potential flooding, environmental impact, the storage location, the machinery that will be used. If the council is inclined to approve this item, they would need a four-fifth vote to approve the item. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? And I'm going to take anybody in the audience first, and then we'll go with electronics, ma'am, for the... Do we have anybody from... Please, address the podium, please, and identify yourself with your name and address for the record and your position on the rezoning, please. And you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Amictos Salinas. Here, to my left, is Victor Mesa, and we're the owners of Redline Development. We purchased this property to subdivide into two phases. What we're proposing is a gated subdivision residential, one-story, with restrictions on the homes at $180,000 plus. We have done a feasibility study. We have looked at the drainage. We understand their concerns, but we also want to thank the City of Mission for already providing the tools such as the master plan. And so with that master plan, we already know that that area has been studied hydraulically and hydrology. There's also a project that that master plan proposes in that area that will benefit the adjacent subdivision that has concerns and also the property that we plan to subdivide. So we plan to meet all the detention requirements that the city requires, as well as the county drainage district. We plan to meet the detention that's needed for the property there. And we also plan to meet the master plan in upsizing the pipes that are coming from the adjacent subdivision. So we did establish those concerns during the planning and zoning with some of the members in the community that are in the neighboring subdivision. We've also met with them in person, and I think we've done our due diligence as being neighborly and trying to do the right thing, but that's what we're proposing. I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mesa, you're going to...
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mesa. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? In the audience, please step forward to the podium. In favor or against? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to open it now for electronics. Ms. Carrillo, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Greg Long.
Mr. Long, if you're on and you can hear me, you have the floor, sir, and name and address for the record, and also, you have three minutes.
Yes, sir, thank you. Greg Long, 712 Lakeview Drive. We're on the north end, up there on Lakeview. But anyway, things are going, you know. Did the city and all that do the floodplain? You know, this is PUD, you know, P, so that's permanent. I don't understand how you can take it out of permanent and redo your rezoning. But furthermore, then, I got a couple more questions I'd like to get resolved. But far as the floodplain and all that, has that all been taken care of? Did the county, are they all involved in all this stuff? And also, another question I have is, you know, we have on our north side, which would be their south side, from 1 Mile South coming down, and I don't know if you can plop up your little schematic, but anyway, you know, we have our utility easement running on the backside. And so are we going to regain that? Are we going to get an easement? Or how's all that work? I'm just trying to figure out that, you know. If you take a look, everything drains, you know, the way that golf course, and I'm sure y'all have all been involved in it. But, you know, the golf course and the floodplain, that's why they designed and developed the holes the way they did, is for all the drainage. And everything drains and comes down to the main drain on the south end over by the little bridge off of Scenic Way. So all the housing, all the RVs, everything in that, in the subdivision that we have now, drain into the eight and nine, seven, eight, and nine, or the holes on the golf course, which drain into the big, to the big retention pond and all that that runs down below on the south side of Scenic Way coming in. There you go. If you look down here, everything goes down. Well, in our subdivision, Mayor, that there's only two, well, there's four drainage that come out in our subdivision on this north end of 712 Lakeview or on Lakeview Drive that drains, and they all tend to fall to the southeast, you know. And we did some, some friends of us, we are neighbors, we went and looked, and, you know, some of, there's one of them that's, you know, probably 20, 24-inch, and some of them look like they're just dead-ended, like some three to eight-inch PVC, you know, running through the deal, or some eight-inch black tubular stuff that runs in and drains into the fairway, which I guess comes down Scenic Way and then crosses Scenic Way into the flood canal there. But, you know, it was designed, and I don't know if the Corps of Engineers, who does all the studies and all that, you know, that just needs to be a lot of clarification. We've gone through this before, Mayor, as you recall. We just want to make sure everybody's on the right page, you know. All of our homes drain to the fairways. Everybody that's on there, everything goes to the fairways, seven, eight, and nine. So if they go in there and build them houses or whatever in there, all of our drainage goes into their backyards or...
If you could summarize it, I'll give you 15 seconds.
Yes, we're just highly concerned of our flooding, you know. Who's going to guarantee that? Who's going to guarantee that we're not going to be flooded out, you know, from them building all that development in there? Who's going to have all this? The Corps of Engineers or the county? They all involved in this? Is it signed, wrote off? You know, is it all been plotted out or what? You know, we just don't want something thrown up, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Long.
All right. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Next person?
Mr. Larry Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, you have the floor, sir, in favor or against this rezoning? And you have three minutes, but name your name and your address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Larry Wilson, 620 Lakeview Drive. And I'd like to correct one thing that they were presenting at the very beginning. She said the golf course has been abandoned. Well, when you look on the county map that was made up a few years back, and the official map that's from the county, it says golf course and lake reservoir. That lake reservoir was built and maintained and produced because of Interstate 2. All the flood, all the waters seemed to run this way, and it's called a lake reservoir. This was not presented when they built the apartments over here north of us, north of 1 Mile Road, and they didn't do anything. And when the hurricane came in last year, they were up to their shins in floodwater where we were not. It held the water like it was supposed to. And then as the time went down and the canals went down, then it presented the time to go on out and pushed it out. It works. And my deal is, is if you go and put stuff in there, and just like Mr. Long said about all our waters from this way, go to the middle of those fairways and right there in the middle. But, and, you know, it's going to present a major problem, and then we're going to be sitting in a flooded area. We've never been flooded here. And so if we do get flooded and they do do this, then who's going to be responsible for this? I don't, you know, that's a good question. And the other thing is, is I don't understand is, is when FEMA goes and puts a state, through the state of Texas, goes in and put this as a flood-retaining reservoir waters to run out, I don't know that we have the right or the ability to even change that at all. That's... Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do we have another individual?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Greg Geer.
How many more do we have?
That is the last one that has their hand raised.
I'm glad because I...
Oh, no, I've got another one that's signaling.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is Greg Geary, 1110 Lakeview Drive. I had gone along with Greg, and I had gone and looked at a lot of the existing drainage and stuff, and I won't repeat what he has to say, but most everyone says that we are handling the water that we have at the time. But I'm going to go a little further and say we're right on the edge of not being able to handle what's here already. And I have one other concern. And it's, I did not buy a piece of property or arrange my patio to have a six-foot cedar wall somewhere between 10 and 25 feet from my property. If most anyone else, most anyone would be upset if something was at one point in time permanent open, you bought property on it, and then find out that it's permanent open for a while, and it's going to absolutely destroy the view. I understand we need to find a happy medium. This ground needs to become productive to some sort. And I wish they would just go back to the old Phase 3 that was with the old Meadow Creek, and there's, and start there at least, and put it out what I call the Boulevard, the main road coming in. It was designed to have homes there. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir, 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 sir. Do we have a fourth one?
Mr. Ron Hawkins.
Mr. Hawkins, you have the floor, sir. Name and address, and you have up to three minutes, sir. In favor or against?
Mr. Hawkins, can you unmute yourself, please?
My name is Ron Hawkins, and I live at 802 Lakeview Drive. The last few years, we've had some substantial rainstorms, including a hurricane. Flooding occurred in Mission, McAllen, Farr, Westlaco, other parts of the state. It did not flood here in our subdivision. Because of the design of the former golf course, floodplain drainage system, now there are plans to build a lot of it on that land. They may level the land, remove some holding ponds, change the direction of the water drainage, build roads, pour concrete. This redesign, this large water system, if it fails, we're going to flood. Since the streets flood in many areas with sewers and roads that are designed by qualified engineers throughout the country, I'm just wondering, has a contractor ever redesigned a water reservoir system with a magnitude as large as this? And has he completed these projects without flooding problems? Now, I'm pretty sure the contractor's legit and he has proper credentials, but I still feel this is a fair question to ask. I'm also wondering, what happens to these children on 1 Mile Road at the school, a drop-off and pickup area? We start adding 200 cars. This is definitely a safety issue. And finally, I don't believe anybody wants a fence 10 feet behind their patio, which is the plan, especially since the last rezoning by the city with Mr. Valza offered 100 feet clearance. I hope you consider what I have said, and I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, sir. Sir. Any other? Ms. Carrillo?
No, Mayor. No, sir, I don't show anybody else.
I am going to officially close this public hearing for item number seven, and I'm going to ask for direction from the council. Council, you have the floor.
I just got a question. Is one of the areas that we approved a couple of years back for R1? Whenever Mr. Valza used to own the property?
It was approved for townhouses.
For townhouses?
Yes.
So they want to do R1?
R1 homes.
And value that over $180,000, I think that's what Ms. Salinas mentioned.
Engaged.
Right? Engaged also?
Yes.
I have just a question for staff. How are we going to address the conversion from the AOI permanent to R1?
I'm sorry, how are we going to address?
Because it is a permanent zoning right now, right? And it's not interim, it's permanent.
Well, it's AOI permanent, and they're applying to...
Right, right. So when, so a permanent, to me, back when I was learning all of these zoning codes, is that's what it was. It was a permanent zone. So how are we handling or how are we managing that turnover, that switch, or the conversion to an R1? What are we going to require, basically, of the developer in order to handle the water?
That would be, okay, it would be through the rezoning, since we don't have, no longer have, we have the old master plan. So it was AOI permanent. The only way to change it would be through a rezoning, which that's why they're applying. Now, all of the drainage concerns that they have would be addressed at the subdivision stage because they need to subdivide the property.
Right. And are you confident enough to, that that can be managed at that point?
Yes. We already, we have been confering with our city engineer as well. We met with... We met with them. We met with actually some residents regarding this issue. And they have met, and they are confident that that issue should be resolved.
Is JP on the line? I'd like to have him chime in.
Mr. JP Terraza, you're on the line, sir. You have the floor. Mr. JP Terraza is present here in the audience. And Mr. Terraza, would you please come to the podium? And you will be asked a question by one of the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. JP Terraza, City Engineer.
The question is, Mr. Terraza, repeat the question for-
The zone, the item that we're considering right now is zoned, has a permanent zone name, right? So we're considering rezoning it to R1. So what, have you considered the options of naming to transform the- then zone zone on? So you're covered?
Yes, ma'am. I have met with the developer, Ray Leonard, several times. And also, this developer is also an engineer. He's very aware of ordinances. He's very aware of what he needs to do. And he's also willing to comply and upsize the pipe as our comprehensive plan calls for. And he's also willing to be a good neighbor. He already met with several of the neighborhoods, several of the residents that live in this area. And he's trying to comply as much as he can. So yes, ma'am, I'm confident that this area will be, it can be developed.
I just wanted to hold that on the ground for the benefit of the residents that have the concerns because it's our responsibility to protect the residents as well.
Yes, ma'am. Like you said, it's our responsibility to do our due diligence. And this developer has done their due diligence also. Before they even bought this property, and met with them several times on the field, they did a feasibility study to make sure that they had all the services around the area and to make sure that they were able to comply with the ordinance with our ordinances and FEMA ordinances and the government's.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I have myself outside that area several times. It does need a lot of improvement. Unfortunately, I don't see the golf course being improved. So I know what type of work they do, the developers. So I think it's going to improve the area. I just want to make sure that we, as a city, do our due diligence, making sure that we take up our citizens and, you know, everything improved up there. So based on that, there's no, I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the R1 zoning, rezoning. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this, I open it for any final discussion by any of the council members. On this, and I'm going to call for the vote, but I need a hand vote because I have to make a four-fifth determination on it, so.
Before we do the vote, why is it because of the, because of the, huh?
If you're going with the recommendation of planning and zoning?
No, it says that we have-
Because they're retired because they had a petition?
That's because of the petition, I have to do a four-fifth vote. And so I'm going to ask for a hand vote to ensure that we get the appropriate votes. All those in favor, say, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries a 5-0 vote for the record. And I will, and thank you, Mr. Engineer. Thank you, Mr. Engineer. Appreciate it. I'll call for item number eight, item number eight, Ms. Deluna.
Mayor, that was ordinance 5011.
That is correct. Ordnance 50, 505011 was approved. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, item eight is another rezoning. This is for a tract of land containing 4.271 acres, more or less out of Lot 18-11, west addition to share land. This is from C3 and C1 to R2. The applicant is Felix Mario Garza Peña. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located 663 feet off of Bryan Road along the south side of First Street. Surrounding zones include general business to the north and west, townhouses to the east, and agricultural to the south. The existing land uses include vacant and commercial plaza to the north, townhomes to the east, a commercial plaza to the west, and single-family residential to the south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. Although the land use designation is general commercial, and R2 is a stair down to the general commercial and would probably be a better neighbor. During the staff P&amp;Z meeting, there was some concerns, and the concerns were in regards to the type of apartments that they were going to build and in regards to traffic. P&amp;Z and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Please, anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody from the audience approaching the podium. Therefore, I'm going to move over to electronics and, Mr. Carrillo, do we have anybody?
Yes, Mayor, we have Angie Wilkins.
Ms. Wilkins, you have the floor, ma'am, in favor or against the rezoning? You have three minutes. Please give us your name and your address for the record, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Angie Wilkins. I am at 104 Sagittarius. That is to the east of this tract of land. My husband and I just purchased the home. We did with, we saw that it was commercial behind us. And dealing with commercial is fine. They get quiet at night. I'm afraid with four apartments per lot, that that is going to be a lot of noise. The Southern Oasis group that we are in is all retired people. It's a 55-plus community. And there's a narrow little strip behind our place that we were told is agricultural. And that would be fine to have a canal or any of that put in there. But no, we don't want to have it changed to residential. We've talked to some of our neighbors, and they're not in favor of it either. Nothing against. We know there has to be advancement, but no. The streets around there aren't set up for school buses and all that. There's going to be a lot of extra traffic and noise. I'm sorry. I vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else?
Mayor, we do have Mr. Ivan Garcia with Rio Delta Engineering. He is on, if the council has any questions for him.
Mr. Garcia, this is a public hearing. And do you want to address the council under the public hearing? Or? If so, you have the floor, sir.
Sir, good afternoon, council and members of the public. Ivan Garcia with Rio Delta Engineering. I'm just here to entertain any questions that the council might have for this item. We are, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the project. We are doing this rezoning for regular fourplex family lots. And it's just going to be the typical fourplex subdivision project. So I'm here to answer any questions that anybody might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any other, Mr. Carrillo?
No, Mayor, I don't see anybody else.
At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I seem to have Mr. Greg Long again raising his hand. I don't know if it's for this particular item.
Well, let's find out. Mr. Long, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
But anyway, the engineering, or Engineering Chavez, or whatever the gentleman's name was, he was in a big echo, so we didn't get to hear anything on the-
Excuse me, let me clarify, sir. We are in a public hearing for a rezoning on item number eight on the agenda. Is your request, is item number eight rezoning? If not, I will direct you to tomorrow morning. Please call our planning and zoning office, and they will answer your questions.
Yes, sir. I just want to make something for the record that we couldn't hear. But yes, sir, I will call tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Appreciate it. Still calling for item number eight rezoning, public hearing. Anybody in favor or against? And we're up with the electronics. Anybody from electronics?
No, Mayor, I don't see anybody else.
In this, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask for direction from the council. Council, you have the floor.
Was there a petition submitted on this one?
A petition? No, not in this one.
Not in this one?
No.
I am ready to entertain a motion in favor or against the rezoning, please.
Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second, and this, I open it for final discussion. No final discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries rezoning is approved 5-0 for ordinance 5012.
It would be 4-0, Mayor.
1-2.
It would be 4-0.
Oh, I didn't see. Correction, I stay corrected. It's 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Thank you. I didn't see her exit. Calling for item number nine. This is a public hearing. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number nine is a rezoning for Lot 38 and the south, 411.4 feet of Lot 39, Melba Carter subdivision. This is from R1 to C3. The applicant is Efraín Salinas. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 700 feet east of Conway Boulevard along the south side of Melba Carter. Surrounding zones include C3 to the north and west. To the east is R1. To the south is light industrial. Existing land uses include residential to the north and east. To the west is commercial, and to the south is currently vacant. The site is also currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as industrial. While the future land use map does show this area as industrial, the reality is that we've seen growth of residential homes in the Melba Carter subdivision. The city has invested in various improvements over the past several years. These improvements include streetlight sidewalks and several city BG homes. It is also noted that a recent request for a C3 was denied in 2019, which making it clear that council would like to keep it as residential. Planning and staff is recommending denial of this rezoning. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If there's anybody in the audience, please come by the podium and state your position, please. I do not see anybody addressing the podium at this time. Therefore, I'm going to move over to electronics. And, Mr. Carrillo, is there anybody in favor or against this item?
Mayor, I do not see anybody.
You don't see anybody? I will be closing this public hearing and open it for the council. But before I open it for the council, I want to let the council know that the planning and zoning and staff has recommended denial. If you want to reverse that, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to need four-fifths or five-five of both to reverse that denial. This, I ask for guidance from the, and direction from the council.
If I may, Mayor, I'm sorry. I did forget to let the council know that during the P&amp;Z meeting, there was opposition. There were several residents that were concerned in regards to the heavy traffic and the safety for the children. Those were the concerns that were addressed during the P&amp;Z.
Thank you. Direction?
I move to go by the recommendation on the board.
You move to deny. We have a motion on the floor to deny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this, I open it for discussion of any of the council members. Anybody, all those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion for denial is approved 5-0. And I'm calling for item number 10 for the public here.
Item number 10 is a rezoning for Lots 31 and 32, Block 1, Town of Madero. This is from AOI to R2. The applicant is Laura E. Bruzolo. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The site is located on the northwest corner of Bohandilla and Peña Street. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the northeast, west, and south. Existing land uses include residential to the northeast, west, and south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as low density. Madero was annexed to the city on March 9, 1998 as agricultural. Zoning has been pending by the city from AOI to likely R1 based on the existing land uses. The applicant desires an R2 zone, which include duplex, fourplex uses, which typically require paved public alleys. With a Madero community, does not have. The lot sizes are 25 by 100. The proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Based on the longstanding existing land use, staff recommends denial as well as P&amp;Z. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I will move over to electronics. And, Mr. Carrillo, what is your direction?
Mayor, we do have the applicant, Laura E. Bruzolo. She is online. She has just advised me.
Ma'am, if you want to address the council at this time, this is a public hearing on item number 10 for rezoning. You have the floor, ma'am. Please identify yourself with your name and address, and you have up to three minutes, ma'am.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Laura Bruzolo. Este proyecto que tengo no es realmente comercial. Yo vivo con mi hermana y con dos sobrinas. Compartimos una casa y compartimos viles. Este es un pequeño terreno que es de mi propiedad. Yo lo que quería es tener algo de privacidad junto con ella y que cada quien sea responsable de sus viles, pero sin embargo vivir cerca, ¿verdad?, vivir juntas. Este pero con independencia. Este todos, ese es un pequeño terreno, el 50%. Son dos terrenos juntos. Son dos terrenos juntos, de 25%. Este, el proyecto es de 810 cuadrados por cada pequeño departamento, que sería el duplex. Este, con dos recamas. Todas las especificaciones de lo que tengo que dejar para los lados, de las distancias con los vecinos y con las calles, está hecho como se debe de hacer. Este, no es para nada comercial, es para, pues, vivir yo y mi hermana y mis sobrinas. Este, pero contraté un arquitecto, o sea, para cumplir con todas las especificaciones. Este, también tengo todos los permisos, o sea, yo sé que no es un terreno para hacer duplex, pero es un terreno para vivir, y pues es lo que yo pretendo, ¿verdad? Este, pues, lo dejo todo a su consideración. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning on electronics?
No, sir.
No? I will close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the council on item number 10.
Mayor, have a question.
You have a question, ma'am? Please address the question.
So there is two lots, lot 31 and 32. Is there any way that two small homes could be built on each, I mean, one on each lot? Or is that not possible?
It would be very narrow, because each one is 25 by 100. So it would be, but very long. Would be kind of unusual.
And they're planning to build 1,600 square feet only combined in both apartments. Am I correct? About 800 square feet.
Well, that's what she says. She hasn't presented anything to staff yet. All she did was apply.
Those lots are very small.
And what was the reason behind our committee denying it?
Deny.
Did she say that she was gonna live in it with her sister? Like, that's their home property?
No, she wants to do, she wants to have two apartments.
But they're gonna live in it?
Yes.
Did she tell that to the planning and zoning?
We did explain to her the process, and she still wanted to continue with the request.
The question is...
I guess my question is, why did planning and zoning deny the request if it was gonna be for her own family?
They considered it a spot zoning.
It would be considered spot zoning, because it would only be, all of the areas is residential. We don't have any apartments, not in that block or near that area.
Can you show that satellite screen again? The screen you had before, the satellite, basically? Yes, thank you. So over here in the corner, that's a house?
They're all homes.
They're all homes.
But most, since the lots are small, a lot of people own more than two or three.
Some also the lots are that size, so...
Yes, most of the, all of the lots are 25 by 100. So the homes there are built within two before lots.
And there was no opposition, right?
There was no opposition.
But there were notified.
We did send notices to property owners within 200 feet. We did not receive any opposition. The only thing for staff is that if we allow it, it would be considered spot zoning, or it would set precedence for others to want to do the same thing.
But there's not too many vacant lots in that area, right?
They, well, they are.
They are?
But they're narrow. That's the only thing, that they're small.
And is there any, what's the closest apartment or duplexes around that area?
I think they're on the corner of Los Indios, and I believe Berri, if I'm not mistaken. And it's just one that was approved over 10 years ago. And actually, in that case, the planning and zoning recommended denial. It was the council who overturned the decision.
Mayor, I don't know what the wishes of the council would be, but I don't think it's really a big deal for this family to be able to build something there.
I'm ready.
I move to approve, to approve the request of the applicant and go against with the planning and zoning. I'd like to see if there's any way that the staff could work with the family to have this get, you know, to have it done. Like, what's the minimum square footage of a residential lot? Like, a townhouse lot?
Let me, I have a motion on the floor, and I need a second or five seconds, and then I'll open it for discussion.
Well, I'll second.
We have a second, and now we can open it for discussion. Go ahead, Martinez.
The minimum square footage for a residential lot would be 6,000 square feet.
No, for a townhouse lot.
For a townhouse, I believe it's about 4,500 square feet. Not 100% sure, but I believe it's...
4,500?
I know they're smaller. They require a lesser setback. In R1, they would have to comply with a six foot on each side, so that's leaving them like 12 foot.
But with the R2 zoning, they can do what they want to do, right?
Well, they would, I haven't seen their layout or their proposal, but they would still need to comply with the R1 setback.
Yeah, they need to comply with that also.
So these lots are noncompliant, because they don't meet the 6,000 square foot minimum.
It was annexed, it was annexed to the city that way, that way you have to keep them as is.
No, I understand that, but right now, they're not, it's a noncompliant...
It's a nonconforming use.
Nonconforming use, exactly. So if we don't approve, that will be vacant land forever, because nothing can be built there of a regular size.
She would be able to build one home in the middle of both lots.
But how big?
On a home where they have less than 50 feet, they require three and a half feet from each side. So she could build a, if it's 50 feet on both, she could build a a good 1,600 square foot home. It's just, it's, no, on both.
On both. But she only wants an 800 square foot home.
No, she wants two.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't...
Right.
But her point, her point is independence. They want to, they're sisters, but they want the independence. So whatever they're gonna design, they're gonna design it to have that independence.
Could we possibly table the item and have them work with you, and then maybe bring it back to us with a solution?
Would you like to see, like, a rendering, what they're proposing?
What do you think, Jess?
Well, maybe we could approve it based on, because I know if we put it on the table, we have to do the public hearing again, right?
Well, we have to, since it's a public hearing item, well, you closed the public hearing, so we could just put it on in the next meeting.
That's correct.
So we don't need to do the public...
You've already closed the public hearing, ma'am. So it would just be a general item.
But yeah, but logically speaking, if you're gonna change the percentage, you would want public hearing also.
You could have one again, but you're not obligated to have one again, but...
Yeah, we can...
You could also approve it contingent on the P&amp;Z approving a rendering.
Well, I don't think we can have an approved zoning with a condition as the problem. That's where I'd like to see it again, after they, you know, staff talks to the applicant and see if there's some sort of resolution. That's my opinion. Because, Susie, there's a way, if you talk to them, that they can build a home with two entrances, isn't there?
Yep.
Privately?
They can't, well, they can't have two front entrances. Because then it would be, it would be the appearance of a duplex. Mayor, the applicant is putting a couple of chat notes. I don't know if you want me to read that when you all asked how big it was. She says it's 800 each one. 800 square feet each one.
Bless you.
Bless you, Jess.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Peddle. You have the floor.
We can table it and bring it back in two weeks, so that way we can meet with them and possibly provide, they did mention that they did hire an architect, and so if they can provide a rendering, so that way we can bring it back and show more of a site plan on the actual property.
Well, if we're gonna table it, I have to ask the one that made the motion and the one that second withdraw their motion, and then I'll entertain the table and motion.
Yes, mayor, I will go ahead and take back my motion and wait for staff to speak to the applicant.
Look, you retract your second. We have retracted the second, you know? And then I will entertain a motion now to...
So I move to table, ma'am?
Yeah, we have a motion to table. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 10 is table. 5-0, it's the table, both. Calling for item number 11. We have a public hearing, Ms...
Item number 11 is a conditional use permit for a guest house on properties on large lots, single-family residential. This is at 3116 North Stewart Road. This is Lot 1, Constantino subdivision. The applicant is Evangelina Garcia. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Stewart Road and Mall 2 Road. The owner is requesting a conditional use for the construction of a guest and pool house. The proposed guest house and pool house and storage will have a total square footage of 480 square feet. It is primarily consists of one bedroom and one bathroom and storage room. Guest homes are allowed on large lots, single-family, as long as they apply for a conditional use permit and as long as they comply with the following conditions. The lot needs to be a minimum of 12,000 square feet. It cannot be used for lease, rent higher, and the owner of such uses may not receive any enumeration for the use of one of the above. The proposal must be clearly secondary to the primary residence. It shall not have access to a public street and shall not have a separate kitchen or separate utilities. The lot is a little over half an acre, and all building setbacks will be met. Since there are no kitchen included, staff recommends approval subject to no separate utility and electrical connections, transferability to others, future owners imposing the same conditions imposed to this applicant, and that not be used for rental purposes. Staff and P&amp;Z recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna be asking for electronic. Anybody on electronics?
Mayor, there was a lady that called. Her name was Esmeralda. She said that she would be on if there were any questions, but I do not know if she's on.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit in electronics? Still no sign? I'm gonna close this public hearing, and I'm gonna ask for guidance from the council. Counsel, what direction?
I move for approval. Mayor has presented.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Any final discussion by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Ordinance 5013 is approved, 5-0. Calling for item number 12, public hearing.
Item number 12 is a conditional use permit. This is for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Denny's, number 2375. This is located at 116 South Sheri Road. This is Lot 1, Denny's at Sheriland, and the applicant is Denny's Inc. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption will be, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed for the conditional use permit and to its own, the property. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Sheri and East First Street along the south side of East First Street. The 4495 square foot restaurant has been in operation since 2005. The applicant is now interested in offering alcoholic beverages with their food orders. There are no churches, hospital, or public, private schools within 300 feet, thus subject to being complying to Section 6.4 of the code. The days and hours of operation are every day, 24 hours a day. Of course, alcoholic beverages will only be served during allowable state selling hours. They have 37 employees. Parking is, they have a total of 178 seating spaces, which requires 60 spaces. They have a total of 73. They're exceeding code by 13. Staff is recommending approval subject to a two-year reevaluation to assess the operation. At that time, they will need to renew their TABC and CUP, compliance with building, fire, and sign code, and that would be it, because they already have business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody in the audience, please approach, please approach the podium if there's any, if you want to give us some feedback on or against the conditional use permit. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna move over to electronics. And electronics, do we have anybody?
No, mayor, I don't know if it was a manager. His name was Pedro. He just advised us earlier if there were any questions. He was on the call.
I am closing this public hearing and open it for the guidance of the council and direction.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. And this is any final discussion for the record. I would like to let you know that we are approving two ordinances. Ordinance 155014 and 5015.
I just have a quick question. Is this the first time they ask for a permit for alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. With pancakes?
Any other questions?
Beer with pancakes? I'm sorry?
Beer with a pig.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, 5-0 for ordinance 5014 and 5015. Open it for public hearing for item number 13, conditional use permit. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Number 13 is a conditional use permit for a nursery on an agricultural zone property. This is at 305 West Mall 2 Road. This is a 1.68 acre tract of land, more or less at Lot 28-5, West addition to Sheriland. The applicant is Azucena Bastida. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Mall 2 Road and Compton Road. The applicant recently purchased this property for the purpose of growing their plants. She's a landscaping designer and licensed irrigator that does home consultations with a 3D render to be able to build a paradise for her customers. She currently has her business in Houston and would just like this property to grow her plants, but at the same time be able to bring her customers to see the inventory by appointment only. Most of the transactions would occur at their client's property. It's only her husband and her as the employees. For parking, it's currently a dirt road. If approved, she would need to install an all-weather surface parking for at least four vehicles. Staff is recommending approval. Subject to, if required, file a, file or record a one-lot subdivision plan or file for a single-lot variance, comply with parking requirements, and the acquisition of a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Please come forward in the podium from the audience. I do not see anybody from the audience coming forward, so I'm gonna ask for electronic. Do we have anybody in electronics?
Mayor, the applicant, Azucena Bastida, is online.
Ms. Bastida, you have the floor, ma'am. In favor or against this conditional use permit, please?
Hi, good afternoon, mayor and city council. I'm Azucena Bastida, and this is my husband, Luis de la Garza.
Hi. Hi, guys. Good afternoon, major and city council. We're both here to answer any questions. We currently have a business in Houston that's very similar to what we're trying to do over there. We're trying to green up Mission with all the freeze. Of course, I'm sure you guys have noticed. We have beautiful plants that we want to grow there and obviously, you know, share them with everyone. But if you have any questions, we're here to answer any of them.
Thank you. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use paper, correction, use permit? Ms. Carrillo, anybody else?
No, mayor, I don't see anybody else.
I am closing this, this public hearing and asking for guidance from the council. Guidance?
I want your approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance 5016 is approved, five oh. And I'm calling for item number 14.
Item number 14 is a conditional use permit. This is for the Texas Citrus Fiesta Vaqueiro Cookoff and Fun Fair on May 15, 2021. This is at 200 West Griffin Parkway. This is approximately 18.60 acres out of Lot 25-6, West addition to Cherry Land, and Lot 1, North Star Plaza, Phase 1. The property is currently zoned agriculture and general business, and the applicant is Texas Citrus Fiesta. If the council is considering approving the item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northwest corner of Conway and Griffin Parkway. Texas Citrus Fiesta organizers have been given permission to have their annual Vaqueiro Cookoff and Fun Fair on the vacant lot to the north and west of Old Carl's supermarket. They are proposing to set up on May 14, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. for both events, although the events will be held on May 15, from 10:00 to 10:00 p.m., with approximately 20 vendors and a stage for entertainment. Parking will be, they'll be utilizing the Old Carl's parking lot, located to the south. The zoning code states that Fun Fair site should be a minimum of 300 feet away from any residential use property from lot line to lot line. The CUP is compliant to this code. Staff is recommending approval, subject to installation of a perimeter fence and debris stop, installation of no parking signs along the Conway and Griffin Parkway, meet the noise, amusement, and entertainment, and other related codes. Texas Citrus Fiesta has assured the city that all aspects of security will be taken care of, as well as following CDC guidelines. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please address the podium at this time. I don't see anybody from the audience approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna move it over to electronics. Do we have anybody?
Yes, Mayor, Lisa Rivera.
Lisa Rivera, you have the floor, in favor or against this conditional use permit? Name and address, and you have up to three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Lisa Rivera, and I am at 220 East 9th Street here in Mission. Mayor and council, we did get approved for the planning and zoning for this event, and we thank them for that. The question is, in regards to the fencing, they approved it with a fencing and recommending the fencing. Is that absolutely necessary in the entire area, or just in a particular zone? Because we are having vaqueros, and that's in an area where they're gonna be pretty early, and then Fun Fair is a separate area from that.
I'm sorry, who was the question?
The question is on the fencing, right?
The fencing. It could be only in the area where they have the Fun Fair, not where the...
You don't fence the whole perimeter?
Well, since she's having, normally they do fence everything, but since now they're having the Vaqueiro Cookoff, I guess that's what she's saying, if she could only fence the area that's required. That would be up to the council if they want to allow her to only fence that area.
The Fun Fair area, and not the cookoff area?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this request? We cannot answer your question at this time, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Do we have anybody in electronics? I am closing this public hearing, and I'm asking for guidance by the council. And if you're gonna put a point of a motion, that you add the fencing, so we can answer Rivera's question.
Is that what PNC recommended? Fencing around the cookoff area?
Yes. They, well, they installed a perimeter fence. They were not specific as to, as to where they wanted the fence.
Oh, I see. So she just wants...
We could, we could work with her, if you like, and only require where it's necessary.
That's fine, ma'am.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, with the fence.
Yes, with the fencing requirement that...
For Fun Fair, yeah.
For Fun Fair.
For Fun Fair.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and this opening for final discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries a conditional use permit is approved, 501, and ordinance 5017 is approved with a condition on the fencing, which Ms. Deluna will let you know, Ms. Rivera. Calling for item number 15. I want you to have the floor.
Item number 15 is a conditional use permit renewal for a home occupation. This is for a two-share beauty salon at 804 West 24th Place. This is Lot 74, Chaparral Heights subdivision. The applicant is Armelinda Gisela Zart. If the council is inclined to approve this option, this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located 150 feet west of Holland Road along the north side of 24th Place. The two-share salon has been in operation since November 17 of 2010. Ms. Salinas has always complied with the home occupation regulations. The last CUP was approved on April 27, 2020, for a period of one year. Ms. Salinas is seeking to renew her conditional use permit. The days and hours of operation is Monday to Friday from 10:00 to 7:00, and Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00 by appointment only. Currently, Ms. Salazar is the only person running the salon. There are a total of three off-street parking spaces, which considering Ms. Salazar works alone and by appointment only needs co, staff is recommending approval for a period of three years to reevaluate the CUP. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? Anybody from the audience, please address the podium at this time. I don't see anybody address, approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna move it to electronics. Mr. Carrillo, we have nobody in electronics. I'm gonna close this public hearing and ask for direction from the council. Counsel?
I move for approval. This was presented, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this, I'll open it for final discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance 5018 is approved, 501. Calling for item number 16.
Item number 16 is a conditional use permit renewal. This is for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Taco Palenque, located at 2420 East Expressway 83. This is Lot 5C, Cherry Land Place subdivision. The applicant is Eduardo Castañeda. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. Taco Palenque is located a quarter mile east of Cherry Road, along the south side of Expressway 83, north of Coles. The last conditional use permit for this location was approved on October 24, 2018, for a period of 28 months. The applicant is seeking to renew his CUP. The days and hours of operation are 24 hours a day. Alcoholic beverages will only be served during allowable state selling hours. They currently have 50 employees. For parking, the apartment, the building requires 79 spaces. There is a total of 657 existing parking spaces held in common. For alcohol, the request is compliant with Section 6.4, which requires that no alcoholic beverages be sold within 300 feet of any church, public school, private school, or public hospital. There are none of these land uses when they are above radius. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time their TABC license and CUP would need to be renewed. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? If there's anybody in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for the electronic.
No, Mayor, I don't see anybody.
We have nobody in the electronic, therefore I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for council direction. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this, I'll open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries ordinance 5019 is approved, 501. Calling for item number 17. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number 17 is discussion and action to designate honorary street name. The city, staff received a written request to have the name of their family member, Oton Tony Guerrero Jr., as an honorary name on Mayberry Road from Expressway 83 northward to Griffin Parkway, a distance of 10,243 feet. This particular stretch of Mayberry Road is in the neighborhood in which Mr. Guerrero was first principal of Casco Elementary and where he lived. His family respectfully requests that an honorary street name be approved on this two-mile stretch of Mayberry where it intersects with 22 streets, inclusive of First Street, Business 83, Quica de la Garza Loop, and Griffin Parkway. An honorary street name will have no change of address for anyone. There was no public opposition during the PNC, staff and city council, I mean, staff and PNC recommended approval. This is a public, a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against? Anybody from the audience, if you, please approach the podium if you choose.
I believe the chemistry is...
I don't know, it doesn't look like he wants to, that's, that's fine, that's fine. I'll move it to electronics. Do we have anybody in electronics? Anybody in favor or against? I'm closing this public hearing and moving it to the council for council direction.
I want your approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, it would be, it doesn't require an ordinance. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So I'll call for item number 18.
Thank you.
Item number 18, Ms. Longoria, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Item 18 is the proposed substantial amendment for annual action plan fiscal year 2019, 2020 to include CARES Act coronavirus funding allocation in the amount of $514,625. The city of Mission was awarded $514,625 from a special allocation of the community development block grant coronavirus through round three of the CARES Act to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic, COVID-19. On March 9 to 2021, CAC held a public hearing to solicit input on the needs of the city and hear presentations from nonprofit organizations and city departments. On April 13, 2021, CAC recommended approval of the proposed substantial amendment annual action plan fiscal 2019, 20 to include the CBG, CB3 funding and provide the following projects. Food Bank of the RGV, 50,000. Affordable Homes of South Texas Incorporated, 200,000. Mission Food Pantry, 20,000. Fire Department Emergency Management Division, 244,625. A five-day comment period commenced on April 16, 2021, and expires on April 26, 2021. No comments have been received. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing on proposed substantial amendment. Anybody in favor or against this changes? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for anybody in electronics. Mr. Carrillo, do you have anybody?
No.
I will close this public hearing, and I will ask direction from the council.
I want your approval.
We have a motion?
If I may, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing. Only the item will be further down in the agenda.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no action needed.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
To have the public hearing. Okay, thank you, Ms. Longoria, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm moving for consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item, at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. Consent agenda item number 19, consent agenda item number 20, consent agenda item number 21, consent agenda item number 22, consent agenda item number 23, consent agenda item number 24, consent agenda item 25 that carries resolution 1728, consent agenda number 26, consent agenda number 27, which carries resolution 1729. What is the direction of the council?
I want your approval.
We have a motion and a second, and last chance for anybody from the council to pull any of them out. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries the consent agenda item 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, resolution number 1728, 26, and 27, resolution number 1729, have been approved, 501. And I'm calling for approval and authorization, and I'm calling for item number 28. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number 28 is a preliminary plat approval for La Homa Crossing Subdivision Phase 2. This is a 32.94 acre tract of land, being portions out of Lot 75, 76, 77, 78, and 79 of Block 2, La Homa Ranch Citrus Grove Unit Number 1. This is in Arul ETJ. The developer is Red Rock Real Estate Development Group, LTD, and the engineers Quintanilla Hetley and Associates. This subdivision is located at the southeast corner of La Homa and West 7 Mile Road. They're proposing 41 single-family residential lots and eight commercial lots. Cherry Land Water Supply is in charge of that area. Their sewer service for this subdivision will be addressed by individual onsite sewage facilities, subject tanks, staff, and PNC recommended approval. This item is now before you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item number 28, and this, I'll open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 28 is approved, 501. And calling for item number 29. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item 29 is a preliminary plat approval for El Milagro subdivision Phase 1. This is 176.574 acres, being part of all of lots 9-7, 9-8, 9-9, 9-10, 10-7, 10-8, 10-9, 10-10, 11-7, 11-8, 11-9, West addition to Cherry Land. It's currently zoned PUD. The developer is Chaco Land Sales Elk, and the engineer is Melvin Enheim. This subdivision is located between South Conway Boulevard and El San Luis Highway north of Los Indios Road. They're proposing 347 single-family residential lots, 99 townhouse lots, one multifamily, three commercial parking lots, 12 commercial lots, three green landscaping common areas, six landscaping drainage common lots, and four civic lots for a total of 475 planned unit development slot. They're currently meeting city water and city sewer. Staff and PNC recommended approval. This item is now before you, and the engineer is present in case you have any questions.
I want your approval, Ms. Deluna.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, and this, I'll open it for discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and it's approved by 501, item number 29, and I'm calling for item number 30. Chief Dominguez, you have the floor.
Mayor, City Council, item number 30 is authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding between U.S. Immigration and Customs Homeland Security Investigations and the City Mission Police Department regarding the designation of Mission Police Department Task Force officers as customs officers. The agreement will formalize the relationships between both agencies and authorize the designation of our task force officers as customs officers under Title 19. Staff and city manager recommend approval on this item.
I want your approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 30, and this, I'll open it for any discussion by any of the council members.
I just want to thank Chief for bringing it to council. Appreciate it.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries, item number 30 is approved, 501. And I'm calling for item number 32. Chief, you have the floor.
Item number 32, Mayor City Council's approval for the implementation of speed humps on the 15 and 1600 blocks of Monte Cruz Street in accordance with the City Mission Code of Ordinance Division 5, Speed Humps, Section 110.351 to Section 110.354. The Mission Police Department receives several concerns from homeowners on the 15 and 1600 block of Monte Cruz. Representatives of the air filed an application...
Uh representatives of the air filed application with the City of Mission. On April the twentieth, uh twenty twenty-one, the Traffic Safety Committee met and approved the request. I had been working with this uh individual along with uh Ms. Deluna from the uh department here with planning and zoning, obviously they got the number of signatures required, and uh staff and city man, manager recommend approval for this item.
Direction of the council? We have a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-two and this uh is open for discussion by the council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-two is approved five, five zero, chief.
Thank you.
And I'm calling for item number thirty-three, Mr. Benson, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have before you item number thirty-three, which is authorization toward right-of-way contract. Staff is seeking authorization toward the contract for mowing, bed maintenance, tree trimming, and litter debris removal on city rights ways. City Council authorized staff to solicit for bid, for bids for right-of-way maintenance on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The City of Mission has since accept, accepted and opened three bid responses for this service contract. Staff recommends award of bid to right-of-way mowing contract to South Texas Landscapes Arrogation and Pest Control, who's the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the scope of services. Services to be included are supervision and labor, materials, supplies, tools and equipment necessary for mowing, edging, palm, tree, and shrub trimming, weed removal, remover of litter debris, municipal and solid waste, tires and rubbish, and landscape bed maintenance where needed. Cost of contract is eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents. Staff and city manager recommend authorization.
We have a motion on the floor to approve item number thirty-three, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this is open for discussion.
So what's the grand totals?
Eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents.
And the other two were in the two-hundred thousands?
Pardon me?
The other two bids came in at?
Yes, ma'am, we had a similar slight situation. The previous time I went to bid, there was a big gap. Uh this particular contractor is a little bit less than what I thought he was gonna come in out. But yes, I, he's very comfortable with his numbers. Uh both, both Alex Garza and Claudia Marquinez are online, I believe. Uh they're here to answer any questions or concerns.
All right, this is one picture.
Any other question by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-three is approved five zero, Mr. Benson, you have item number thirty-four, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Item number forty-four, thirty-four is replacement of shade canopies at Market Square via state-approved by-board contract. Staff is seeking the authorization for the purchase and replacement of all the shade canopies at Market Square uh that were lost due to excessive wind damage caused by Hurricane Hannah of July twenty twenty. Purchase will be made from Play Outdoor Indoor Equipment LLC at a cost of twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars via state-approved by-board contract number five-nine-two-dash-one-nine. Staff and city manager recommend authorization.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve item number thirty-four and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh is approved for item number thirty-four and calling for item number thirty-five, Mr. Benson, you have the floor.
Um Mayor, if I may, uh sir, I'm asking for item thirty-five to take no action, there are some modifications that need to be done and further assessment uh regarding this particular purchase, and so I'm asking for no action.
We are going to take no action on item number thirty-five for the record, and I'm calling for item number thirty-six. Mr. Benson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item number thirty-six is seeking authorization to accept a grant from the Petco Foundation. On April seventh, twenty twenty-one, the City of Mission Health Department received an award notification from the Petco Foundation Animal Welfare Organization's performing sheltering and adoption grants. The grant will assist the Health Department's animal control services by delivering animal lifesaving community programs for vaccinations, neuter and spay programs, and other costly animal care. The Health Department is seeking authorization to accept the grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve item number thirty-six, do I hear a second? We have a second and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-six is approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number thirty-seven, Ms. Longoria, I think we have you back already.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members again. Item thirty-seven is the approval of a proposed substantial amendment for annual action plan fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh the approval of the substantial amendment uh is for the following activities to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic, and they are Food Bank of the RGV, fifty thousand, Affordable Homes of South Texas, two hundred thousand, Mission Food Pantry, twenty thousand, Fire Department Emergency Management Division, two hundred forty-four thousand six hundred twenty-five. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? We have a second and this is open for discussion.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mayor, you have the floor.
What is the Fire Department Emergency Management, two hundred, two hundred and forty-four thousand?
They will be purchasing equipment, and I do have a list of that equipment here. That would include uh video message boards, uh trailer, portable restrooms and showers, uh a generator, uh transfer switch for the generator, medical equipment, and a pipe and drap for privacy of uh running the shelter. These will be used at the shelter uh here at the Parks and Recreation Building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-seven is approved five oh, and I'm calling for item number thirty-eight. Mr. Avila, you have the, the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I come before you with item thirty-eight, uh just authorization to lease case eight-three-six four-wheel drive motor grader from Noises Power Equipment via by-board contract five-nine-seven dash nineteen and finance via sourceball contract number zero-eleven-six-twenty-dash-NCL. Uh the authorization is to lease the case eight-three-six four-wheel drive motor grader from Noises Power Equipment via by-board five-nine-seven dash nineteen for the Public Works Department for a total amount of two hundred eleven thousand three hundred sixty-four with two, with two cents with a monthly lease payment of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five with twenty-two cents. Financing will be via sourceball contract zero-one sixteen-twenty-dash-NCL. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-eight, do I hear any questions or concerns from any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-eight is approved five zero and calling for item number thirty-nine, Mr. Avila, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Item number thirty-nine, sir, the authorizations to award bid for tire installation, repair, and service calls for all city vehicle and special equipment. The City of Mission accepted an open three bid responses. A recommendation is to award bid to Scott's Tires, the lowest responsible, responsive and responsible bidder, meaning all specifications in the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-nine with fifty cents. This contract is for two years with two one-year renewal options. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? We have a second and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carrying, item number thirty-nine is approved five zero, and calling for item number forty. Marshall Calazos, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh item number forty is granted variants of ordinance number twenty-one ninety-eight allowing Sherland and Rennett School District fireworks display for graduation ceremonies under the supervision of the Mission Fire Department and Mission Fire Prevention. A request has been received from the Sherland ISD to provide a sixty-second fireworks show at the upcoming graduation ceremonies for the class of twenty twenty-one. The graduation ceremonies will be held at Thomas, Thompson Football Stadium starting at eight P.M. May twenty-six, Sherland High School is gonna have their graduation, it should end around nine forty-five with a one-minute show. May twenty-seventh, it's Sherland Advanced Academic Academy, scheduled to end at nine fifteen with a fireworks display. And May twenty-eighth, Sherland Pioneer High School completed at approximately nine forty-five with a fireworks display immediately after. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second and I'll open it for discussion. Uh do we, do we have a whole harmless contract with them on the, on this event? We did last year, we'll get another one this year. Just make sure that, that it's included in it, because it's not stated here that whole harmless contract is a, but that would be a requirement.
And they're all supposed to submit permits and, and all the paperwork.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number forty is approved five zero, Mr. Marshall? And I'm calling for item number forty-one, Mr. Bilmares, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item forty-one, discussion and possible action to implement work authorization and engage qualified firm, firms for infrastructure studies. City Council authorized staff to solicit proposals for infrastructure studies. Staff received two proposals, one from Tedsey Infrastructure Group, Inc., and Building Transportation Infrastructure, Inc., VBA BTI, Inc. Both firms were deemed acceptable and qualified to perform the services based on the set criteria outlined in the solicitation for proposals, seeking council direction.
Yes, I'm also seeking the council, uh, that we approve the both firms and, and, and use them as needed only, as needed only for the record.
We, um, how did we advertise for, for people to apply for this?
We posted it on our website, we, we solicited proposals through our, our online portal, and we posted it on the newspaper to invite for firms to submit proposals.
How many did you receive?
We only received two proposals, ma'am, yes.
Would re-advertising, would that, do you feel like that might uh bring in other companies?
Possibly, yes. Um, you know, it all depends on, um, you know, the scope of the, of the service as well. Uh some firms choose to make that determination based on the scope. Uh is it feasible for them to participate or not? Um, you know.
I don't think we would have a plan to change the scope of work, we would, we were to re-advertise, we would use the same scope of work.
And who exactly is that scope of work?
The scope of work? How, uh, I think our engineer is here, he, he was uh in, uh, in, in coordination with, with us in regards to the additional studies that were requested through the scope of service. Uh I believe it's additional studies that were not conducted by Tedsey of our current infrastructure right now.
The main, the main one is to, to, of, of the studies that we want to look at is how to move uh, uh volume of water from the north side of Interstate Two through Interstate Two to the south side of Interstate Two, I think that's the most, the, 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 that's the one that I'm, I'm working for.
And this is, this can be done in-house? I mean, obviously, we would need more staff, but would this be something that can be done if he had appropriate staff?
Definitely, yes, ma'am, it can be done with more staff.
I would prefer to hire somebody to help out, Mr. Perez.
My opinion as well.
Immediately.
Do we have any dollar amount of sign for this?
No, this was just a request for qualifications.
That's correct.
Well, I think that if we hired another help for that for uh JP's department, I think it would be money well spent, because he's gonna need the help.
I second that motion.
Okay. So what do you wanna do with this, this item? Can, can, she can make that motion, sir, because it's not on the agenda.
To deny the item and we'll direct it to Randy, to Mr. Perez. I move to deny.
We have a motion to deny the item?
Three motions to deny, one on tonight, too.
Ms. Garza, you said, you said?
Yes.
Okay, open it for discussion, Mr. Bella, you have a question?
No, I don't.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh five oh, forty-one, item forty-one and is directed to Mr. Perez, you know the council's, the direction.
Yes, sir, we'll uh, I'll uh meet with JP uh to advertise for that position.
Let, let me uh clarify, the item number forty, forty-one was approved four to one, I'm voting against it since I brought the item to, to the, to the council. So, for the record. Item number forty-two, Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number forty-two is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have two in general fund and one in the cemetery trust fund. In organizational for the general fund, we have nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars in expenditures for the monthly payments of a lease on a motor grader for the Streets Department, and in the Streets Department, we have two hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars in revenues and expenditures to set up the postings of the capital lease of equipment in the Streets Department. In the cemetery trust fund, we have expenditures of thirty thousand for paving improvements at Laurel Hill Cemetery. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second, Ms. Garza?
Yes, sir.
We have a second, any discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the five oh is the vote for the budget amendments, item number forty-two and number forty-three. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Uh thank you, Mayor and Council. Um item forty-three is a discussion of possible action on modifying uh COVID-nineteen uh City of Mission guidelines. Uh this is the item for the city council to make modifications on the city's existing guidelines. Uh at this time, sir, we are uh requesting that we um seek approval for reopening the administrative offices to, to the public at the Veteran Cemetery. Um that, that has been uh a recommendation and also uh from the state Veteran Lands Board, and so we are asking, of course, we would also require social distancing and face masks to be worn at that, uh, at that location, uh at this time, that's where we're requesting.
Is that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Well, I wanna piggyback on the, on that opening, I wanna open all the city facilities at their main and use their main entrances and, and follow the CDC guidelines, you know, especially here in City Hall, to begin to open the front doors.
Okay.
That's what I would like to recommend. Anybody else from the council?
So you're gonna, you wanna open regular hours?
No, I, I just wanna, the, the, nothing to be changed, just that, that the, that the citizens uh would be able to use any facility in the front, in the front, and then from there, we follow the CDC and, and facility guidelines as far as that is concerned, from the entrances of all the facilities, parking wreck, uh public works, utilities, you know, uh all the city police department, you know, fire department, the, 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 up to the waiting area, you know, and then from there, CDC, uh, our CDC guidelines are, are enforced for the protection of the staff, you know, from there or so. But, uh, but, uh, you know, the, the citizens, you know, it's gonna get hot and hotter, you know, we all hit a hundred and three the other day without even thinking about it, you know, and, and, and so just, uh, so they can come in and, and at least be in, inside the, the facility, and then from there, any, they don't pass the, the temperature, they don't pass the caffeine, they don't, they, they don't answer, answer the, the questionnaire accordingly, you know, then, then the staff will take appropriate action to, to, to advise them to come back when they're, when they're healthy, you know, as far as that is concerned, for the protection of all the citizen, of our, our staffs, as far as that is concerned. But yes, and open the, the cemetery also.
We'll, we'll monitor them, uh, one, one of the most utilized is, is here, uh City Hall, and of course, our utility building as well.
Yes. Hey, do we have a motion?
So for example, Mayor, if they're gonna go into the, the water department, they would still need to come in through the front door?
No, the water department, they have their own entrance.
Because I, I heard just one entrance, no?
No, that's already open, the water department's already open for, for, for the, the door, the doors are already open. Go ahead.
I'm having to go to work now, kind of every day, our school is just open now, but there's only one entrance, and we actually have to check the temperature, and they have to ask you all these questions, and so I just wanna make sure their employees are safe and not to disturb or, or have all the ready to have, does it need people to do that, to make sure when people come in, their temperatures are checked, and they're being masked?
Well, those, those things should already be in place. Right, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the Right, I'm talking about the checking of the temperature and the coughing and, you know, the monitoring. No, we still have, we still have the, we still... They're entering right now. Not since the last time, not since the last city council meeting, they're being allowed to.
So, right now, we are limited to our vital statistics department. They are coming in and they're waiting. We did, we do have a window, a walk-up window, but they are coming in and we are servicing them, you know, at limited capacity. So they are coming into the building, however, they are being helped, you know, two or three at a time depending. We don't have a large stacking of individuals. The water department, they're coming in for new accounts. It was holding up the drive-through lanes and so we're bringing them in. Of course, also monitoring the limited amount of individuals that are in the building or in the waiting room for new accounts, new services. Yes, for the most part, some of them, or for most of them, have opened up. They do have staff coming in that check in for individually, to check. They do it manually, at least the city mechanic does, and they do ask the questions. They do have staff there present at the entrance. Here, we have the temperature monitor check that is automatic, that we ask them to place their hand or their forehead and it reads their temperature as they walk in.
I don't want to change the protocol. That's not, the deal is just doors where the citizens are not lying outside waiting, waiting in the heat, you know, in the heat, especially at 1:30 in the afternoon and 2 o'clock. You know, that's, and that's not only here in any facility of our city.
Yeah, but if you open this lobby, I mean, how many people can you have in this lobby right here?
Well, we used to post people.
You know, so before... Yes, no, right now, we've been monitoring. As they come in, we bring them in to make sure everyone is spaced out accordingly based on the CDC guidelines. We haven't had too many individuals come at the same time where we do have a line of individuals waiting for either death certificates or birth certificates here. We do form a line at the utility billing, but we do have individuals inside and outside because of the spacing. So we are monitoring them. We're not allowing everyone to come in. Before, we would have them lined down the hall when the lines were long. Now, we're having some in the lobby, some in the hallway, but going towards the out of the building. And so we do have a line outside that builds up. Same thing with planning. We designated an entrance for planning as well. We bring them in as they call in. And so we monitor that individually based on that. But we are prepared to, you know, not have individuals waiting outside for a long period of time, especially because of the heat in the upcoming days, especially in the summertime. But we do anticipate to continue monitoring that as we move forward.
How many entrances do you have to City Hall right now?
Right now, three, ma'am.
And so you have someone there from 8 to 5 monitoring the entrance and taking temperatures and stuff?
No, not, we're taking temperatures here in the entrance. So you have staff as they come and meet them. They take a temperature there. We don't have an individual sitting there as they come in. As they come in, we check their temperature and monitor them.
Would it not work better? And I'm just asking if everyone came in through the front door, got checked, and then went to their perspective?
Yes, yeah, we can definitely do that. It would just be the utility billing that would be, you know, they would walk over there to that area and then come back.
So we would be closing the, running a zoning door only for exits? Allow exit but not entry? If they enter, they enter this.
Like, you know, I think that's a better control over who's coming in, just one door and everybody gets checked and answers the questions if they need to.
Yes, we can do that. Yes, we'll do that. Okay.
Do I hear a motion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You want me to wait till you sit down, Mr. Perez, or you want to do your routine matter from there, from the podium?
No, sir, I can continue.
Yeah, go ahead and continue.
Yes, thank you. Just to inform the public, we'll continue also to host the vaccination clinics. Tomorrow, we have a second dose that is scheduled from 8 to 1 at the Mission Event Center. We are encouraging any and all residents that have not received their first dose that they come and receive the vaccinations. We are, we do have plenty of supply from the previous vaccination clinics. And so we encourage everyone to do that. Also, as next week, we'll be participating on Saturday, May the 8th, with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council on the tire recycling. So we will be accepting tires from our mission residents at our south location at the, by the landfill, 1400 South Conway. We will be asking for proof of residence. We will be collecting tires from the residents to come in. We will be sending them over as part of a regional effort on recycling of tires with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council. So there is partners throughout the valley and also in the county areas with the designated sites to do that. And of course... We're looking at four to six tires per resident. And of course, depending on the, how we, they come in, but that's the recommended amount.
Do we set the limits or the RGV, do you also set the limits? Of six tires, huh?
Yes.
Yes, no commercial tires where you have the businesses come in with trailers full of tires.
So those are the ones they're gonna throw in?
That would have to get that taken care of.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir, and then also, of course, we will be traveling this weekend to Austin in honor of our fallen officer. We'll be recognized at the Texas Police Memorial Ceremony this weekend in Austin. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
I don't have any comments because I was gonna say the same thing that we would, let the public know that we were traveling this weekend, but Mr. Perez has already addressed that. So we'll start with the city council. Mayor Protem? Mr. Blat?
No comment.
I have no comments.
No comments.
Okay, if there's no comment, then I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to BTCA Government Code, Section 551.001, to consult with our attorney. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. We are in executive session. We have a motion to reconvene. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Calling item forty-four A. Mr. Martinez, what what do you have?
Uh yes, sir. This item requires a motion to deny claim and instruct the the city attorney to conduct research on items discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion to? We have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Aye, I oppose. Uh it's a four to one vote for the record. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item for adjournment is five oh. I don't hear any arguments.